The committee would like to welcome the audience. Viewers may watch live for committee meetings online at tcapstone.net backslash board. Recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. Uh, there is no public comment uh today and therefore we will move on to the procedure item at draft minutes. Uh portion of the agenda, are there any changes to the draft minutes?
No.
Alright, hearing none, the remainder is posted. Uh, yes, uh, I didn't text Scott to see if he was here either, but.
He's not as the way we think.
Okay.
So, that's right, let's roll.
Alright, and then uh board policy updates, phone to Connie Taylor.
Thank you very much. This is one of the quarterly updates that we get from Trune. Um, no new policies, so we are recommending that all of the ones that I'm gonna go through today, just based on revisions, go on to consent. Unless one of you would like to pull them into discussion. It seems daunting, but they're, you know, relatively minor changes, so I'm gonna go through them pretty quickly unless um you want more detail, you can stop me at any time, but we'll move through these. First one is about policy twenty-five oh four, uh change on the first page, essentially just making a clarification that public participation in board meetings refers to individuals. So they just swapped out the word public for individuals in section B. So no substantive change there. Thirty-one-ten, um is data breach response. They have modified this policy to indicate that the, what the district has to do in terms of notifications. Um, not only if we experienced data breach, but they've also added on the first page, if we received notice that there was a breach by a third party who has district information. And then also, we have an additional responsibility that if more than a thousand of Michigan residents, so being a, you know, an organization with more than a thousand people, if everybody was affected, we would have an additional obligation to notify the consumer reporting agencies that maintain files uh on a nation, nationwide basis. So just cleaning that up. Unfortunately, I think that's probably the result of a lot more data breaches occurring, and so they're just trying to stay up to date. Uh thirty-one fifteen and thirty-one fifteen A, so the next two, um are just updating the definition of um the, those who are protected under Title IX. It used to be that when they use just the general term sex, that also included pregnancy and gender identity. There's changes that's no longer automatically implied, so those are listed out separately. And there's a little bit of a typo there on, on the word pregnancy, which we will get fixed um for the next board meeting. And then also same in thirty-one fifteen A, just a change to the definition um in that policy. Uh thirty-one eighteen, this is our Title IX sexual harassment policy. Um, what they're trying to clarify here on page one is basically that if we have a allegation that includes not only sexual harassment allegations, but other unlawful discrimination such as race, age, disability, and if we can't reasonably separate those into distinct complaints, we have to implement the entire Title IX investigative procedure for the entire complaint. Which is, you can see through the thickness of this policy, is a pretty substantial regulated procedural um obligation. And then last page, you'll see this a couple times in here, that we have a new office of civil rights that we report to. Um, so the new address is listed on the last page. Uh, the accounting ones, next one thirty-two oh one, just a citation update. Um, thirty-two oh one, an accounting. This uh basically says how we would need to address our capital assets accounting and also um disposal of any federal funded equipment. So this is just an addition to that policy. Then we've got thirty-two eleven, we already um caught this, first time with keen eye of Christine Thomas Hill, that training of our compliance officer is not mandated, um it's optional. But their language, I liked a little bit better, so we're just gonna clean up the language in the last paragraph there on the last page H. Um, and then we have thirty-two twelve. It really just clarifies under definitions that when they're defining financial obligation, it's, this definition is only for the purpose of subsection C to B of this policy. So it's not your overall definition of a financial obligation of the district. Um, and that's that for that one. Thirty-three oh one, um, it, we, there used to be a preclusion on giving preference to Michigan-based businesses if you were using federal funds. And that um conclusion has been eliminated, so it has been removed from the policy. Um, thirty-three oh one A, this is basically just telling you that they are pulling in, it inferred into this policy is the applicable regulation, which is two CFR two hundred dash one slash ninety-nine. So it's just included by reference into the policy. And then also on the next page of that policy, um, the district, when we're doing bidding opportunities, also may, needs to take affirmative steps. Um, not only for minority-based businesses, wasn't, women-based businesses, but also now small businesses and veteran-owned businesses. Thirty-three oh seven, this is just a citation change update. Um, thirty-four oh two, drills, plans, and reports, we're just removing the dates because those deadlines have now since passed. So nothing additional there. Thirty-four oh seven, our asbestos management plan. Um, basically what this is talking about are adding is provisions related to contractors. So if they have been accused of, convicted of, cited for any sort of violation um of the environmental laws or regulations, we would be precluded from um, um contracting with them. Also says that we'll do our background check and due diligence to make sure that none of that stuff exists. Thirty-four oh eight, um, our fire, firearms and, sorry, slow down.
No, I was just thinking, like, I was, I was like, I was reviewing that, that's a federally required change?
Yes.
That's.
That's gonna be tough, because a lot of those guys get cited and take care of it immediately and.
A lot of times, it's not even a citation, it is a citation, but it's like a.
I don't know what record it even goes on.
That's what I was, said, I know a lot of uh things that have been cited that have been like, I'm pretty sure that's incorrect, but go ahead, give me the citation and it's no fine, because we fix it today. Like, over and over, I, I can't imagine there's too many construction companies actually qualify, that's like.
No, that's, I, whatever.
That's why I was like, huh?
You have to love the, the feds, right?
We'll see how this goes.
Okay. Thirty-four oh eight, the firearms and weapons, there is a new requirement under student safety legislation that by October first of each year, that we um notify parents of safe storage of firearms to any parent of any student in the district. And that we also need to post that on our website, um, so.
Hmm, that's interesting.
Yeah, and we'll come by that, we always do just before year season, you might remember, we do a, a resolution, so we'll just add it with that.
Yeah, 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 I mean, we, we started this.
Yep, couple years ago.
Weeks ago, so, yeah, okay.
What is our restriction on carrying um firearms into board meetings?
You cannot, you cannot on school grounds. Even open carry, yep.
The policy, if you, if you.
You can't carry, okay. We, we had a board member who used to carry a firearm.
Yep, we have a board policy with, that there was a lawsuit, actually, shortly after that. Ann Arbor, yep, and then it was found that schools do have the rights to be able to make weapons based on.
Just curious.
And it does not imprint upon second amendment right.
There's a few carve-outs in there for, you know, obviously law enforcement or security or anyone else that the board may approve, but yeah, general citizens cannot.
This was a board member.
Forty-one oh one, the non-discrimination, again, this is just the change of the definition for Title IX. And then you'll also note on the second page, and this is, appears in a couple of policies, anywhere that it had referenced the Michigan paid medical leave um is now been changed to ESTA, so ESTA Earn Sick Time Act. Forty-one oh five, religious workplace accommodations. This one, um, basically i- is the same as under, now under ADA, if someone is asking for a religious accommodation, we don't just meet with them. We enter, it was a interactive um conversation with that staff member. Very similar to what we do with someone asking for an accommodation for disabilities. Uh, forty-one oh six, again, the changing it to the ESTA. That's the only change there. Forty-four oh three, performance evaluation, there were some modifications to section twelve forty-nine of the school code, which changed evaluation requirements um in the ratings, and so um this has been updated to reflect those changes moving forward. The next two policies, um, the forty-four oh seven and forty-four oh eight, essentially what those are doing is adding a provision for coaches and um, they will say extracurricular positions. In this district, we also know them as Schedule B positions. And that any sort of discipline or termination related to those p- positions need not meet the just cause provision. Um, it only needs to meet um the provision that it's not for an unlawful reason. So basically making them at law. And there's a few little typos that we need to fix on forty-four oh eight, but we'll get those, those corrected as well. Forty-four oh nine, under non-renewal, um, uh, there were some changes to the Teacher Tenure Act, and this is just updating um the effectiveness ratings that are applicable under the Tenure Act. There's no longer the highly effective, effective is the highest rating. Uh, now moving forward.
Questions, really quick, on our original uh agenda, forty-four oh seven and forty-four oh eight were also, did we just go through those?
Yes, those are the ones where it's that.
That just the cha- oh, 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 okay, okay, I was looking at the last page. No, sorry, you're, you're good, keep going.
Alright, um, under fifty-one oh four, it might be look a little confusing, because there's a little bit, there's typos there for you as well. This is just um, is solidifying the rights that students who reach the age of majority have. Um, so, under E where a UC just says represent, it all, it should say represent themselves during disciplinary hearings. So we will make that adjustment on the policy before it comes to the board, on the consent agenda.
Can they have an attorney with them if they want to at those hearings?
Um, at a discipline hearing?
Yeah.
Yes, they can always bring counsel.
Okay.
And in fact, several times they do.
Okay.
Um, unlawful discrimination, this one again, uh fifty-two oh two is just the change of address to the Office of Civil Rights. Nothing substantive there. Um, parent involvement in education, the fifty-four oh one. It adds reference to the parent engagement policy to schools that are receiving the Title I funds. And also indicates that a copy of the policy must be included in the handbook, moving forward. The next one is pretty meaty, um, it's the Title I and parent engagement policy, which the board did elected due because we receive Title I funds. This is really outlining what that process looks like. It also says that we have to review it annually, and then when you get down to section B, it's very detailed in what that parent engagement needs to look like um within the district. Lots of, lots of additions there. Poor curriculum people, they always get the raw end of the stick. Fifty-four oh six, essentially is just clarifying that districts using Title I funds, including Perkins Five Funds. Um, I think for some reason, they felt the need to add that for further clarification. Student promotion, this retention and placement policy fifty-four eleven. Basically, all they did on the second page is that they had an updated um citation and also added the terminology that the final decision must be consistent with applicable law. Um, I think that's because the law changes, so rather than have a specific citation, if it should change, whatever is applicable. Fifty-four twenty, uh sex education, on the second page, they just struck through under C on that second paragraph. And that is because that exact same language is included in section A, the first paragraph. So it was removed for redundancy. But no substantive change. Section fifty-six oh four, student support services, when this talks about any program, any claim of disability-related discrimination will be addressed pursuant to, previously, it only cited policy fifty-two oh two, but they also added references to policies thirty-one fifteen through thirty-one fifteen H, which are those that also talk about non-discrimination, anti-harassment, and non-retaliation. Fifty-seven oh one.
There was a typo in that one, did you?
Oh, is there?
Um, athletic, last mandated reporter, last word, trainee.
Oh, the next one?
Policy fifty-seven oh one.
Oh, yeah.
The very last, right?
Thank you. Yep, we're just expanding who our mandated reporters are to include physical therapists, physical therapist assistants, occupational therapists, and athletic trainees. And we'll practice training.
Good catch, Scott.
Yep.
Right, good eye.
It was on your added boy list.
Makes one, one question off the next.
Fifty-seven oh seven, um, uh, that's our wellness policy. Under food, uh meal modification, I think it's on the third page. Uh, it just adds the five oh four language, so students can get meal modifications as an accommodation um under five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act. Fifty-seven twelve, concussion awareness. Um, this is just expanding so everyone's clear that it, any athletic activity includes um athletic activity that incurs in a PE class. Which is why all of our PE teachers also have to have the concussion awareness training. And then after you got your packet, we got just two days ago, two additional ones, which have been provided for you today. Was, so we thought we'd try to roll them all in at once, as opposed to doing this again next month. Um, policy four.
I'm just gonna correct, grab this, my mother-in-law who's got the papers, she's called mine a few times.
Oh.
Okay.
Policy forty-two twenty-one, under employee speech, it basically says if a parent is objecting to something the teacher's saying or their instructional materials, that it refers them to the policy fifty-four oh seven, which um is our next one. And that is you review our complaints about instructional materials. Just, I think, uh, hot off the press, a little over a month ago, there was a Supreme Court decision. Um, it's called Mahu, Ma, Ma, what is it, how do you say it, Mahmoud versus Taylor, no relation to me. Um, parents objecting to some instructional materials based on religion. And previously, they could opt out of a class like sex ed or some of those things if you were offended by the materials, but it really wasn't a religious objection for opting out of materials, there now is. And so, parents may object to instructional materials, not library, but instructional materials based on religion. And then they also recommended, because only, this needs to be more of a board and administrative decision, that we take out that first step of going directly to the teacher and then to the administrator. First step will be going right to the building administrator, who will then refer to the teacher and they'll have a dialogue, but then it goes on to the committee review subsequently. So we've added religion, the same standard that we used um in the Yoder Supreme Court case, that is a um, it substantially interferes with a student's sincerely held religious belief or religious development.
And that does open the wide.
Stand of worms, yep.
Yes, and that is Supreme Court.
Figure out where we go there.
Hot off the presses, so.
So how do you remediate that, I mean?
Essentially, what they, if a parent objects based on it, and we do find that it interferes with a sincerely held religious belief, that then the student can opt out of that part of the instruction and be given an alternate um, um assignment. Similar to what we do with sex ed, parents who don't want their kids to go through that, they can opt out of that, but then they would be given an alternative.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And that is all the recommended changes for the board policies this time around.
Alright, so, questions? Um, they're all currently slated on consent, right, all of these two?
They will all, they're all revisions, so they were recommended to be all on consent.
I think I'm still gonna need that.
So I'm fine to just put them on consent, obviously, I did not receive any comments, did you? Have you talked to board members?
I have not, but Dr. Van Wager and I've had a discussion to potentially reach out to some board members who may have. And if we can get their questions answered in advance, we'll try to do that. Otherwise, they would obviously have the opportunity to pull them off for discussion.
Okay, and then do you, like, based on that, because obviously we'll push them to consent, there could be some minor ch- minor changes. Like, do you want us to?
You will get an update, well, what would happen is, I'm gonna uh check with board members to see if anybody has any that they would like. If that's the case, you know, with the committee's permission, I'd like to at least have those, you know, considerations at the table under consent.
Yeah.
And you know, that the board members have beforehand in the public packet.
Yeah.
You know, and then if there are anything they want from that point, you know, that's different, then we would, we would have to put it on consent.
And that's fine, that's why.
We'll wait to put it on the, on the.
And that's kind of why I wanted to give you the authority to make those changes as needed.
Yeah.
And then you're just.
If, if we just think that there'll be a difference of opinion of what's there and what's a board member has at that point, we'll keep what's there and the board member will ask to just put it on discussion.
Yeah.
But if we can get to a yes, where we all collectively go, okay, that's okay, we'll put it on there, but if a board member doesn't like the change we made, then at that point, they can pull it off and put it on discussion.
Obviously, anyone can pull it off.
It's just a little bit more efficient if we get more members in between this, especially having a month in between our board member and committee. This one especially, like, there's plenty of time.
I agree, I just wanted to make sure we gave you that.
Save some money on that Monday night if we can.
I wanted to give you some, the authority to do some of those minor changes without having to put it on discussion to do this.
Well, if there are recommended changes, I'll put them in a memo, and then if there, if you guys don't like the changes that the other board members have recommended, then you can pull it off for discussion.
Or if we just go, we don't think that's gonna be the consensus, then that board member can do it.
Yep.
We'll check with Beth right away.
We will check with all the members to see.
She reads, reads this copiously.
She keeps us honest, for sure.
Yes, she does.
There's a few that do.
I won't be one of them.
And I took out one, sorry.
You're celebrating your contribution at that point, okay.
Okay, um, then, uh, without any other comments to that, we'll move on to a general review for the two meetings.
Okay, so we have uh our August twenty-fifth regular board meeting, uh call the order, pledge of allegiance. Um, uh, we have the review approval of agenda, first public comment. Our standard legislative and, or up, and district highlights. We will have our updates of our curriculum, finance, and executive committees. Um, we will have a report out on board office hours. Uh, we have, again, all the, currently the policies we reviewed uh today on the consent agenda. Um, we have an item there that we always just do for, of course, uh catalog updates, to be honest with you, there aren't any, but we keep it on there just from an M D standpoint for practice. Um, and uh, meeting minutes for the August eleventh study session, um, as well will be for approval there. We will have our second public hearing, as required by law, for sex education curriculum. Um, at that point, Dan will be here, but the intent is that only if board members have any additional questions. We won't completely review everything again that was done last month, but again, by law, state law, we have to present it in one month, give public comment, and then approve it in the next month with pub, with public comment, so, that'll happen. We have um our, again, under discussion, is that approval of the sex education curriculum? Uh, our school safety update is a standing agenda item. Certification of Board of Education voting delegates for the MAS B conference, uh, that'll be coming up uh, uh, in October. Uh, we will have the three board policies again that were reviewed here. Our second public comment, board president, closing remarks, manager.
Can I, I don't know if this is the right place, and it's not actually on this agenda, but a conversation, and maybe this is another conversation to be had regarding our report outs on our MAS, MAS B trainings. Um, I don't know that wish, those should be, I mean, can we not just email each other and give our updates to the board versus for the community?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we've done it as like, when we've had the conference, I think we've done a, allowed a report out. But I think, I agree, like, we don't need to hear about every.
Class, in class, and what the topic was and what the discussions were, because I feel like if seven of us went and then seven of us reported out, and so, I don't know if, I don't know, I just, I think a better way, and, and again, we can maybe talk on our one-on-ones or whatever, but is to just email the board, you know, and copy everyone on it to say, these were the classes I went to, this is what I learned, in my opinion, but.
Yeah, I'm not totally, uh, I don't think we need, especially when there's uh, you know, it could be differences, I mean, it's really hard, because we're not gonna get into a discussion about a topic that no one's been prepared for, so it's a little one-sided in that regard.
Yeah, okay, and, yeah, and.
So I, I don't disagree, but I think we have to have that as a board decision, I can't.
Okay.
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 So, you know, your purview, um.
But what was on the?
August eleventh, we have as well.
Yeah, okay.
Um, which is the study session, call the order, pledge, review of the agenda, a public comment, number one. Under consent will just be the meeting minutes from the July fourteenth meeting. Um, it's our study session for strategic plan, um, our second public comment, board present closing remarks, and agenda. And just for the record, uh, Dan, Jesse, and the team spent five hours today working on strategic plan stuff. Um, and uh, our hope is, uh, somewhere Wednesday, Thursday-ish, that their target is done and send draft to the board to have, be able to review those items and be able to have, you know, thoughts and different things for it come Monday night.
Yep, and as I said, I think we'll, just to be clarified, we, we will understand that there could be multiple rounds and feedback and.
The board will approve, and the board's ready to approve.
Yep.
And it's the study session, we will do what at the end?
Theoretically, the board could approve anything, but I think the, in fact, I, I don't think it's gonna be, I think the likelihood is it's gonna be on the twenty-fifth. Um.
That was our plan, is that we would, you, expecting at least a few things, you know, that we would take that back and bring that back, you know.
I'm confident enough that that's gonna be the case, that we probably should add it to the twenty-fifth as a discussion item now, preemptively.
Good call.
Um, rather than modify it later, so just add it as a.
So let's say that, say, you know, necessarily, so discussion item, um.
A, B, I, I think you can leave it very vague, because we don't know strategic planning.
I would say strategic plan.
Yeah.
Plan, yeah, plan.
Yeah, as, yeah.
Let's do it at the end.
Yeah, it's a very light, I hate to say this.
Don't say it, don't even say it. Don't say it, don't even say it, just go, we will add it and we're good.
Add it, yeah.
Thank you.
Dr. Van Wager, were we talking potentially about going into closed session on the meet and confer tentative agreements on the twenty eighth?
That's in September, I believe.
We're we're bringing it to the board to vote in September, but we.
I thought so.
Yes, we had talked about maybe doing closed session after the twenty eighth meeting to just, to to review, so that they had an opportunity to consider before.
Oh, oh, for review. Okay. Yeah, I think, you know, that you say that, I think that that is the case that.
So the twenty fifth, so closed session on the twenty fifth?
Twenty fifth.
Yep, to discuss contract negotiations.
Okay.
There you go, that feels more like a meeting then.
Already, you said it and bam, they appear.
Yeah, I know, that's what it was, I didn't even say it, I just thought it.
Well, you started it.
Ah, that's how it works, okay, yeah.
Um, okay, so yeah, we'll add that uh closed session after, um, yeah.
Yeah.
And then is there anything else, I thought there was one other item. I don't have, no.
You've got your board president closing remarks.
No, I thought there was one other item that we talked about, um, on two.
So I think, I know of it, you just want to make sure they have that.
Okay. Alright, uh any other changes to the meeting agenda?
H.
Okay, H R update.
Alright, super busy season, just I, one example, one of my staff members this week did eighteen different interviews, so we're, they're moving and shaking and we're still in the hiring process. And um we had licensed programming with this week, that's what it was, and we had a number of qualified candidates for the vacancies that we have, so we're feeling really good about that. Just going down the line from an administrative standpoint, obviously, you all received the news of the promotion of Brian Gwenny. Assistant Principal at Central High School to the lead role at West Senior High School. So we have posted for that position and we're hoping to move that along pretty quickly, particularly if it's a a internal move or um what have you, there will need to be a backfill on that as well. Um so teachers, we're in the final selection process stages for our elementary P E and elem- um kindergarten position, so. Um we anticipate those vacancies being filled by early next week. And then we also do have still a part-time Spanish position for our shared time program, so we're continuing to look, but at this juncture, we we have not had um applicants for that. So if anyone wants to do a smart part-time Spanish gig, we'd love to talk to you. Um I, we have three administrative assistant vacancies throughout the district, so those are, at this point, at the secondary level, but we're still doing some internal movement. Three custodial positions, two second shift and one third shift. And as always, we continue to hire bus aides and bus drivers, but we did have one in today doing his orientation for bus drivers, so that make, always makes us happy. So we wanna remind folks, though, for many of our positions, we're doing referral bonuses for our staff members who refer their family members, friends to come. Uh and apply for positions, we have sign-on bonuses, we have paid training opportunities for multiple areas, we have tuition reimbursement, so lots of opportunities for.
Board members as well.
No. Sorry, you'd have to step down for the board in order for me to hire you. You mean for a referral bonus or for a hiring?
Either way.
Yeah, no.
You get nothing.
Shut down my hearing.
Alright, but we would, yeah, highly encourage board members to refer people, that's that's awesome.
Detax is paying.
Yeah, right. Alright, so that's our vacancies that we wanted to highlight, but also a reminder that we continue to do open interviews. We have one scheduled at this point, we will get some additional on the books, but the one that is currently scheduled August fourteenth from eight to ten A M here in the Glenn Lewis Administration Building. Come meet our folks.
Yep, and then uh it was, that did trigger what I was thinking we were missing on the agenda, and so I'm just gonna ask, every year. We've ever been on the board, we've always had to have an emergency meeting around the time of our board meeting. To approve changes to the budget based off of splits or.
Yep.
To allocate or anything, there's been a number. Is that likely to happen, should we just put it on the agenda right now?
Well, we're hoping not, but you know, I I emailed the board, updates where we're at with, you know, splits and that element, and so. That's up to if somebody contacts you and wants to have, you know, that really the study session is, you know, we're right up against school starting for the, you know, real quick, that last one.
Oh, I know.
You know, so at that point, it's just, if, you know, if the board wants to, you know, we we don't know what our money situation looks like, and we probably won't, you know, to start school.
No, that's, that's why I was thinking, like, in case, considering the unknowns and the.
Then I think we just add it at that point, I I don't, unless the board's telling me or you guys are at this point.
I'm I'm comfortable, I'm I'm not.
That there's something there that the board wants to investigate more, you know, and again, if that does happen between now, I would, I would ask that the board just think about this, adding it to the study session. Because, you know, the 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 twenty fifth, we're, you know, we're close to school starting and and. It's kinda tell you right now to go out and try and find teachers, hire at the last minute, to find quality candidates, you know, like, you know, we. You know, we've had this conversation, like, I think what we have right now with the quality of people we have would be better than somebody that's not necessarily has experience or quality. Just for the sake of trying to do something.
I'm fully fine, I just wanted to make sure I didn't.
That's why I put in my update for the board, so if the board wants to have that, the board should let you know, and then at that point, I would just ask if that's a conversation the board thinks they wanna have. It's better to do at the study session than it is waiting, you know, um because normally you might, remember, we flip-flop board and study session dates.
I know.
You know, so this is the lo- the last meeting we really have, while we do and technically we could, it's not good practice and the board. Has kinda given administration, like, we really don't want a last-minute board meeting, and so that's why I I gave all the enrollment update, where we're at with all of it as it sits.
I'm good, I'm good with it, I just wanted to, said, make sure that we've at least addressed the fact that if there is anything we need to, I guess, and that that's good enough. If we, if there is anything we need to address, you're right, probably by the, on the August eleventh, they can give you one.
It sure would give some time for us to try and do something of, you know.
And even now, I think, you know, we had told you, we have been screening candidates and ca- having kind of people in the wings and the event that something popped up, and so what we were finding. Is that we were watching enrollment numbers, we were watching enrollment numbers at Cherry Knoll, in particular in their kindergarten, because they were super close to needing an additional section. They reached that benchmark, and so we reached out to those candidates that we'd already vetted, and most of them have already received positions in other districts, and so. At this juncture, we don't have that backup plan, it would be going back to the candidate pool to try to find someone, and as Dr. Van Wager indicated. Generally, at this point, the pool becomes a little bit more shallow at this time of year. We've done that where we're setting teachers' classrooms up over Labor Day weekend, and it's a, it's a big challenge.
And if we get a situation where we have to, just because fourteen kids walk in, you can't plan at all for that, but as it sits right now, we, you know, you, we're just a reminder, we brought. Um administrative assistance into central office now for enrollment, so we have somebody here pretty much daily, Monday through Thursday. So the people, as they come in, we can get those in the system, where before, they might sit in an elementary for, you know, weeks until an A A reports, which is still week or so away.
Like, I believe the eleventh.
Yeah, so we're, we're like, pretty much up to date where we are with that. We still have some drops that we'll need to figure out, maybe if people move away, but we're trying to get as absolute accurate number as we can. And really wanted to have that in place by mid-August, to be able to make our best, our our best possible element of staffing. Again, and based on board feedback, if there was anything that's happened.
I haven't received anything that I uh recall, so.
Yep.
I just wanna put out there too, um the one probably is not aware, is that we recognize splits are difficult for teachers to 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 do. Um we tend to tap some of our more veteran teachers, folks who with experience in doing, but we're also implementing, we did a letter of agreement at the end of the school year last year to implement split supports. Where we've had supports for overload classrooms, we did not have similar supports for split classrooms. So the supports that we're offering for our overloads, our larger classrooms, we're now gonna be offering to our splits. You know, so getting, you know, s- um some additional uh resources for the teacher and or um uh aid assistance in the classroom.
And they can take that additional aid or they can take money for that?
So right now, the way that the L O U reads for split supports, it's a determination of the administrator. Obviously, they're gonna consult with the teacher on what's best, but um there it's.
Because there could be a situation where you already have some aids in there, maybe it's special education students, and there have been weird situations at times where you have so many adults in the room. That it can be more chaotic, so like to add another person doesn't make sense, and so some, but it's more work on the teacher. So that's something we'll look at, and depending on the teacher and the adults in the room, we'll look at a balance from that standpoint and make a determination.
And doing so in consultation with the teacher, I don't wanna say we're taking that out of there, but the other piece to that, why compensation is also an option, is because. We may post and not be able to find them, you know, use, to our best efforts, we may not have applicants for those aid positions. So either way, just making sure that we're doing a little extra for those teachers who are um in a split classroom.
But they get to make that choice.
Current, no, right now, the administrator gets to make that determination.
But again, don't wanna make it sound like it's not gonna be in collaboration with the teacher.
No, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
Yep, but in the end, administrator has to go, what's best for kids in this scenario and and will base it, but again, we're going to make sure we have input from teacher and all that.
And that's true on overloads too?
Overloads, right now, the language reads that the teacher gets to make that determination, but oftentimes, if, you know, we are going in there, we're talking to the teacher on, like, we really think that an aid needs to be, they they do so in consultation. So that's, it's a pretty collaborative, we've not really had any where the administrator said, I I oppose to what they've they've chosen. Um, yeah.
But there could be a situation arises, and so we felt that that's what we need to.
Asking, should I ever get asked?
You got it.
And I will.
Um any other items on uh staffing? Uh any other items in general?
I have just two, three quick questions. Study sessions, are you allowed as, are we allowed as a board to pass motions and do business at study session?
Yes.
Okay, because that's the first time I've ever dealt with.
We try, we, we try and avoid it unless needed.
But they're posted meetings, so.
They're posted meetings.
Yeah. Um, secondly, do all of our subcommittees have an opening public comment and then a closing public comment?
No, no, all at one.
But we do that at the regular board meeting?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so we could add the additional public comment, if it were necessary, does it have to be posted?
I would suggest that usually it should be posted before meetings, if you wanna do that at a committee level.
And and the board has analyzed this and had this conversation in the past.
Okay.
That felt that that was adequate for committee meetings, but for the board meeting, wanted to have that because some people may wanna make comment after a decision. Committees don't make a decision, they only really pass things on to the board.
Hmm, I'm just, sometimes we get into the meat of controversial topics during those subcommittee meetings, and I hate to have people sit through a whole meeting and then never get to say anything. In response to what we just discussed, so.
As I said, I'm not as a, I don't think I really have a preference as a committee how each one does, that was just the guidance we had.
I think it should be consistent though.
It it should both be consistent, so, yeah, so I guess if if you wanted to bring it up, we could at a different board meeting.
Well, I just thought it'd be consistent with the board.
We typically do a lot of those updates and changes in the organizational meeting.
Okay.
Which is a long way out. Maybe you could probably add it to something to uh to, because that's when we kind of go through all those kind of policies, boom, boom.
If you're gonna have committees or not, or.
Yeah, we have rarely, I I mean, even curriculum and not, I mean, I'm serving, I'm serving on finance, but public comment, I'm very rare.
Was there one more?
I forgot.
No?
You dissuaded me from asking you to get it.
Pressure you in, so uh um, okay, well, if there isn't any other items, uh the next board, and it is a quick turnaround, because it's uh Thursday, August twenty eighth. Because of the double scheduling, the pushing the week back, uh it's Thursday, August twenty eighth at four P M. Um with that, I adjourn the meeting, thanks.
Oh, I knew what to go.